Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place due to the outbreak of the coronavirus. This meeting of the Town of Berlin Board of Selectmen will be conducted by a remote participation to the greatest extent possible. No one in person attendance of meetings, attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time by a technological means. The Town of Berlin will use best efforts to post an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting on the town's webpage, the town's YouTube channel, and approval minutes will be posted to my town government. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to attend the virtual meeting may attend via Zoom webinar platform in one of two ways, with both audio and video access, or by telephone audio only. I'm going to call the meeting to order at 7:02. Announcements, I think I already said, the meetings of the Board of Selectmen are generally recorded for transmission on both Berlin Cable Television Access Channel and YouTube. Your voice and image may be recorded. We have approval of minutes for March 2nd, March 23rd, and March 30th. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
And seconded.
Okay, were there any changes or suggested comments or?
I had legal, if I could through the chair, I had legal take a, take a look at the March 2nd minutes for the hearing on the flat penny alcohol license, and only those two areas on page three that are shaded in gray are the areas that he recommended be changed.
He changed.
That's what I've done, correct?
I've done it.
Yep.
Oh, you changed them?
I did, yes. They're done.
All right. All right, then we'll take a vote. Chief, I?
Waisaki, I.
Stone, I.
Okay, it's unanimous. Do we have any correspondence this evening, Margaret?
No.
Okay. And general public comment?
We don't have any attendees.
Yeah, Barry, Barry.
Oh, Mr. Egg is part of us.
Oh, okay. Nothing, Barry? Okay. We'll move on to the hearings, appointments, and presentations. Is Tom Galvin here?
Yeah, but he's, yeah, but he's on at 7:10, so he's got
Okay.
five minutes, so do we want to just scoot down and do, have Margaret pick out the good stuff from her TA report?
Yeah, we could do that if you're ready, Margaret.
All right, let me dig in my pile of paper here and get it. Okay, some of the big things, and I know Chief's going to be talking about the COVID-19 declared health emergency too, but in my town report, in my report today to the board, I do have reminders about the town's Code Red notification system. People are highly encouraged to register their phone numbers and email addresses on that system so that they can get calls from the town in the future, whether it's for an emergency or a community outreach message. In my, in my report today, I also include some information provided by the state. I think there is a recognition that there are probably lots of people who have been sheltering at home and could use some support, and the state does have a call-in line, 211, that is, if they choose the call to talk option, they could speak with people about issues that are causing them, other than the emergency itself, that are causing them stress. You know, they, they do say, and this is really hard, to pull oneself away from the TV, from the news, because it's constant. It's a constant flow of information, some of which may be factual and some may not be, but all of it is pretty discouraging at the moment. So if anybody needs those numbers or the contact information, they can give me a call in the office at 978-310-5919, or take a look at my town, my TA report, which is posted online, and we also have some other information that's posted on our website that might be helpful. The more around COVID-19, the accountant's office, as you know, is already maintaining a folder and a coding system for emergency-related expenditures, related specifically to the COVID-19 declared emergency. The FEMA grants portal is going to be opening this week, and I'm attending two briefings tomorrow and another one on Thursday on COVID-19-related issues, so we can try to stay on top of the emergency-related issues and the funding issues associated with it. The library septic project, there are still some things kind of moving forward. The wetlands were flagged, and there was no charge for that, and our project manager, volunteer project manager Evan, was able to confirm that all the work's going to be done outside the 100-foot buffer of the wetlands, and so there's not going to be a filing required with CONCOM or DEP. So at this point, the, he's going to be able to submit the design to the Nishoba Associated Boards of Health this week, and they will waive the filing fee for the town project. So that's going to continue to move forward in the background. I wanted to mention that we're using Zoom right now tonight to do the boards' meeting, and there are other boards and committees that are starting to make use of this. This is a town account. I purchased this on my card. However, I don't have enough in my expense line for the full reimbursement, and I'm hoping for the board's support to split the cost in half to pay for the account. That was 1,100, roughly $1,100. I ate the tax on it because at the time I signed up for it, it was March 19th, we were pretty early in the list of municipalities that were signing on to Zoom, but even at that time, the wait would have been, the wait would have been horrendous to try to get the tax waived, so I ate that, but I'd like the board's support to split the cost 50/50 between my expense line and the board's expense line. You okay with that, board members?
I had, I had told Margaret that I thought you both would be supportive of that. It would be, what, 550 from expenses and 550 from?
My, my expense line and board's expense line, yes.
If, if Lisa and Peg both agree, then that's how it will be paid.
That's fine. Now, are you going to have enough left in your expenses for the rest of the year?
Well, if I had paid the whole thing, I wouldn't have had, I wouldn't have had enough to pay everything, but I think I'll be okay. I think, given this health emergency, I'm here, I'm not doing much traveling elsewhere nowadays, so to any meetings or anything, so I think I'll be okay for the rest of the year.
And this goes on to June's list of COVID-19-related expenses, correct?
This does, yes.
Peg, you okay with this?
Absolutely, anything for Margaret.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so, and then, is it, oh, Chief must be, I don't see him here yet, but one other thing, on Friday, I spoke with Steve Mendoza, who's Harold Martin's legislative aide. He was touching in with all of Harold's district towns, and so I had a conversation with him, first of all, about construction regulations regarding COVID-19. You've probably seen some communication on that, where we're trying to keep people at construction sites healthy, and we're trying to keep our own inspectors healthy. So I had a conversation with him about that. We also had a conversation about FY20 and FY21 revenues, just as we've been discussing. We think that overall, the state's FY20 revenues will remain intact, and that's not, that doesn't, that does not include meals and rooms taxes. We think those will be devastated in the last quarter. In FY21, he has warned, and we're preparing for this, that our UGAR, it's called UGA, our unrestricted general government aid, is going to take a hit, and that'll be across the state. So he did warn of that, and I told him that we are preparing for various scenarios. And finally, just an update on the Tolman property work. I received an email from Fussin O'Neill, who's CMR PC's site licensed site professional or consultant. They want to move forward, even though the governor's order has delayed their work on the site a bit, so I have put them in touch with the fire marshal and the fire chief to get him information, historical information on the site and all the records that that department holds. So that's it in a nutshell.
All right. I don't see Chief Galvin online, no?
Let me, let me see.
Folks, can I, can I just say, I got a text from the chief saying, he says it looks like they're waiting for the host to start, but this has started, so I'm not sure what's going on.
I was kind of wondering when I saw zero attendees, whether folks had a different login or something.
I just did mine out of the email of.
The chief said that he's trying to call in by telephone, and it's not letting him. It says, please wait or try again later, because the meeting hasn't started. Oh, wait, manage participants, now they're all piling in. What did you do, Peg?
I waved my magic wand.
Okay.
I swear to God, I didn't, I did, I did not do anything.
Okay, then. Chief, you're, you're on with the board. Now, let me make sure he's unmuted here. Peg, I think you're the host, even though it says I am. You want to promote Tom to being a panelist, please?
Mary, I'm not, all I did was hit record. And, oh, well, there he is. Oh, look at him outside.
All right. Let's unmute him.
I can't hear him.
Is he unmuted?
No, it's not unmuting.
Hang on, let me see, no, it's only.
How about now?
There you are.
Hi, Tom. Your, your video is frozen, but can you still hear us?
No, I think he's gone.
There he is, Tom, can you hear us?
He's still showing as muted.
I can, it's weird, I can, I can hear you through my phone, but not on the computer.
Okay, well, we can hear you through the phone, too.
He's showing as muted on the screen here, I don't know who's got control of that.
Well, and it looks like he's frozen too, unless he's really good at not moving.
The special police skill.
It is.
Chief, wave.
All right, so June said that she can hear all of us. June, say something, though, so we can see if we can hear you.
She's not, she's an audience.
Oh, all right.
June, are you hearing any of this?
I can hear you.
Okay.
Hey, Tom, you back?
I am back.
There he is.
All right.
I'm hanging up with the phone, so, all right, now I can hear and see everybody.
All right.
I'm going to try and turn my headset on, that works a little better, too, so, hopefully that works. Now, you still got me?
Yeah.
All right, all right, here we go. So, a little interesting, we're all learning still, but it was definitely an interesting, interesting month for March, you know, everything, we talked a little bit, I was in for my last report about the beginning of coronavirus, and I don't think we really thought where we would be and that we would be where we are right now. But even with that, we still had a relatively active month, but it was kind of a transition. Instead of some of the normal policing activities, we were doing a lot of more type security things, because all of our businesses are pretty much empty. You know, we transitioned to a lot of checks of areas, but we still logged 866 incidents, which is kind of on par for where we normally are. It's been nice that we only had five motor vehicle crashes, and we found a way to reduce those, and very minimal motor vehicle stops. You know, it really was, and has been eye-opening, I think not only for us here, public safety-wise in Berlin, but across the state, that it shows, you know, what we still have to learn and what we're learning through this event. There are lots of things that I think we thought we were prepared for, and we're obviously seeing that it's going to take a lot of work, even in the future, once we're through this, to really be, be set, because unfortunately, this probably is not the last time we're going to see something like this. You know, there's, there's more and more things out there, things are, the world is changing, obviously, and there's things like this, like a virus that we can't control how it changes. You know, a lot of what we, at least especially what I have done, is a lot of additional planning, coming up with some potential different shift schedules and things that we would need to try and continue our operations should we have a severe reduction in staff if people became infected. I included what I sent out to everyone, kind of had one of the directives I had sent to show how things have changed. It's quite interesting, we often talk about community policing. I think everything we're doing now is against all those principles. You know, we're trying to minimize our contact with the public, we're, we're trying to, we're doing things over the telephone that we never would do in the past. You know, we want to sit with people, we want to take reports, we want to see how they are when we interact with them while we do that, we can't do any of that right now. So as much as it's, it appears that everything we're doing is not community policing-related, the reason we're doing it is for the community. We're doing it so that we can keep our officers healthy and keep them working, so that we're still able to deliver the services to the community. But with that, we still, we still had some, some interesting things happen. You know, fortunately, we've seen some mental health issues as a relation to this, but also, we actually had two people in one home overdose, and, you know, there's no, there's no face of addiction, you know, but a lot of the overdoses that we have seen have tended to be younger people. This was two people in their 50s. Fortunately, there was a quick response from both police and fire, the, so that we deliver Narcan now, and we call them double doses compared to what we used to carry, so it was the equivalent of seven doses of Narcan for one person and six for the other, I'm sorry, eight and six. Crazy, the amount of that counteractive drug that had to be delivered to bring these people out of their, their situations. One was in full cardiac arrest. Fortunately, a family member that was in the home was a trained medical professional and performed CPR. The other person was in respiratory arrest, and another person in the home was actually doing rescue breathing for that person. So very fortunate for them that they had people on scene that were able to, to keep them going until emergency services got there, and luckily, both of them survived the ordeal. So we were very lucky with that. And then we had a serious house fire. We kind of capped the month with that, and not something we want to see happen to anybody, but it was a good test of both the public safety agencies to see how we worked together and worked through an incident, and it ultimately, it, it worked out. Unfortunately, the home couldn't be saved, but the police officers on scene, from their immediate response, worked with the firefighters that were on scene to start to deliver their, their firefighting service, because, you know, again, small, small agency, call department, not a lot of people on scene right in the beginning, so there were police officers that were dragging hoses off the truck and doing their thing to assist, assist the firefighters on scene. Our monthly animal report, as I said, the donkeys were back again, so we had seven animal calls, skunk, sheep, but then again, the donkeys reappeared again. So hopefully, the owner is, is shoring up those fences so that we won't be chasing them down Central Street anymore. Just a couple other things I wanted to touch on, there was some correspondence about Berlin Auto Parts and the neighbor issues. What we dealt with just that past week had more to do with concern of whether or not they were essential business and they could be open. The neighbor seemed to be bothered that, that they were opened, but based on the lists that had been released, they can be open. They sell auto parts, also, they're involved in recycling, so both were considered essential businesses, even though for the most part, they have closed, and I think that situation was, was resolved. I did put the, the neighbor, the gentleman, in contact with, with the building inspector for one issue, and I taught, you know, I mentioned and then talked to the Board of Health, and I know that Paul McKelk went out and, or spoke to, to Vaughn or Anne Marie about the situation. So everything with that seemed to revolve that day. And lastly, just everything else that we're seeing related to COVID right now, you know, our residents have to be concerned about not only the virus and the spread of the virus, but all the criminals that are trying to capitalize on it. We are going to see, and we've already seen, we haven't personally dealt with it yet, but it's, it's coming into the area, is all the scams that are involved. The number of people that are unemployment, on unemployment for the first time, and people that are releasing information and trying to get information from them, you know, through the unemployment system or scamming through the unemployment system. The federal stimulus that's coming, that, that we've already started to see across the country, that our people are reaching out and saying that they need to do certain things in order to get their payment, only to, to take money out of people's bank accounts. Also, general fundraising and with the shortage of PPE, the personal protective equipment, the, you know, people are reaching out and doing anything they can to take advantage of the generosity of the public, where they're thinking that they're actually trying, they're either helping people that are suffering through COVID or helping hospitals, public safety agencies, or whatever it may be. So, there's, there's a lot going on, but overall, the, the health of the department is fine. We were able to, before they changed the regulations, to have just over half of us all tested, kind of a preemptive strike to find out if we had anybody that was asymptomatic, that was a carrier, that could have infected everyone, that really could have put us, put us down. Unfortunately, the first responder testing they were doing, because it was an overwhelming number of people that were being tested, they had to reduce that to only people that showed at least one of the symptoms. So unfortunately, we got about half the people in, but haven't gotten the ability to get anyone else in. My hope is that we run through this and we don't have to get anybody else tested.
Thanks.
That's about it. Yeah, no problem.
Through the chair, can I ask Chief just a couple of questions on this? Chief, first of all, well, first of all, I want to make note of, Chief and I talked about this today, Steve Mendoza, Harold Martin's legislative aide, also mentioned that the representative is working on an isolation site for first responders that may have to go into quarantine because they've been in contact with someone with COVID-19. So they are working on something in Lancaster and possibly other locations, too. But Chief, I'm wondering if you could just touch on code red signups for residents and explain how easy it is for people to enroll?
Yep, it's very simple. If you just go to the town's website, there's a giant code red logo, you click on that, and it just walks you through the signup process. You create an account and register your phone numbers. Unfortunately, you know, we found out over the last few days that some people hadn't been getting the calls. There were some changes, there was, the Traced Act was signed into law at the end of last year, which put some restrictions on phone carriers, so they have been blocking a lot of robo-calls. But if people are able to register through the site, especially if they have a cell phone, there's two good things about the cell phone, that, excuse me, you can register and get your calls wherever you are, but if you join, it is an app you can also download. If you download the app, if you happen to be traveling anywhere in the Commonwealth or actually anywhere in the United States where people have code red, and there's an emergency, something that you really need to know that could be life-threatening type of an emergency for you, the app knows your geographic location, and it will actually tell you, you know, not only the residents of that area that are registered, but because you're in the geographic area, the, the emergency notification will go to you as well. So it's an added, added thing in there. And also, if you sign up through email, we have the ability, and all these notices that we've called about, I've attached those as attachments to the emails, so people that are getting emails are also getting things without necessarily having to follow through and go to the, the website secondarily. And just, just to touch on what Margaret had said about the housing, I know Chief Clark had also been in touch with a hotel in Boxborough that is offering the service at very reduced rates, and the reason we, we looking into having secondary housing for first responders that get sick is, well, the last thing we want to do is have them bring it home, get their whole family sick, and that would lengthen the time that they may be out of work. You know, we want to get them healthy and get them back to work as soon as possible. If we're able to isolate them from basically everybody, they're not going to infect anyone else. Also, you know, if, if they become injured as part of their job, if they caught it because they were working, there's, they're covered under that through 111F, but what we don't want is if they have a family member that's compromised or has some other issue at home that then has an issue because of this, you know, they've gotten injured at work, and now they've brought that, you know, injury home, and could cause us some other issues down the road. So if we're able to isolate people in some housing, we'd be better off. The Boxborough Regency that actually is offering it now, it's $50 a night, and we were told last week in our last MEMA conference call that FEMA will be picking up 75% of that, so not, not a huge sum if it did come to that.
Okay.
Well, thank you.
Oh, wait, don't go.
Wait.
Got a question. So you had mentioned a little while ago about the scams that are coming in and you're hearing them, was wondering if there's any way you could write up like a little ditty on them, and then Mary can probably post it on the town website, I can get it out on the two other websites. I think it's just one of these things that are important for people to know, that there are unscrupulous folks out there waiting to take advantage of them, so if we can help the town in any way, that would be awesome.
Yep.
Janity, janity item might also be willing to put that in the item.
Yeah, absolutely, and I'll, Officer Guling has some good contacts through the community service stuff that he does, so when he's in tomorrow afternoon, I'll get some of the information that he's gotten as well, compile it with what I have, and we'll put something together.
Awesome, thank you.
Excellent, no problem. Have a good night.
You too.
Bye, Chief.
Bye.
All right, ready to move on to our appointment with our town clerk? Mary, can you unmute Eloise?
Oh, I see a hand up, is that Eloise?
Wow, Eloise, all right, man. It's not letting me bump her up to a panelist. No, no.
Hey, it says, talking permitted. Eloise, you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
There you go. Hi, Eloise.
Greetings. I'm looking at your agenda, and under old business, first for the annual town meeting, I request that you not hold it at the school.
Okay.
Because, because the town hall is accessible, and you, you don't want to recontaminate the school.
I do, I did understand that the school will most likely not be in session if we do delay or postpone the town meeting with some of the dates that we're thinking of. Does that change how you feel about it?
I, I, my feeling is because we have another location which has held town meetings for 100 years, we can easily go there and not impact the school at all.
Okay.
And then for the town election, the, I would like it to be, I don't care if it's May 11th, that's what the ballots will say. That's what the ballots will say. I would like it from noon to 4:00 PM. You have to have a minimum of four hours. But I would like to stress people to get absentee or an early ballot. I would like to conduct most of it through the mail.
Okay.
And if it's held downstairs or in the town offices, there are two doors in the back. They could come in one door by the bathrooms, come into the election room, vote their ballot, and then go out through the door by, which used to be the cafeteria, which they now know that's where the door that they use for the food pantry.
Okay. I think there would have to be directions for some people who don't know all of this.
Oh, definitely. But that, before I bothered doing that, and there'd have to be a sign at the entrance because that's the emergency vehicle entrance. But I'd really much prefer most people to get an absentee or an early ballot, but I can't force the issue.
Yeah. So if we were to postpone the election, what, if any, issues would it make for the town clerk's office?
It means, let's see, next Tuesday, if you keep the 11th, then I have to have an open voter registration next Tuesday. If you don't, then I have, if you move it to June, then I would have to hold a voter registration 10 days before the date of the town meeting.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, 10 days before. And for how many days? How many days of open registration do you have to have?
Well, if you don't hold it today, then I have to hold one, I have to hold one on the 14th, because that's when the, 14th at 5 o'clock is when all nominations have to be in. And the legislature is not bending on that one.
Eloise, you're referring to the deadline to register, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And then the 16th at 5 o'clock, between the 14th and the 16th, they can withdraw their names from the ballot. After the 16th, then I would prepare a ballot. But the 14th is also the 20 days before the annual town meeting and the election because they're called on the same warrant. Did you understand what I said?
So, I'm not sure. So hypothetically, if we were to choose, for example, June 29th for the election, what, how would that change your voter registration?
That means I would have, is it going to be on the same warrant as the town meeting?
It could be, because it would follow the town meeting. So you could do the same article that you usually put at the end of the town meeting warrant, just with a different date. So it'd be one week after the town meeting.
Well, see, if the warrant for the annual town meeting and the election are on the same warrant, then it goes back 20 days.
Okay.
Okay. But if you only have, like, say you have the 8th for the town meeting and the 29th, then I would have to have two separate voter registrations.
You got that, Margaret?
Yes.
So if you do it on the 22nd, one, two, three, four, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10.
20 days before the 29th, well, 20 days before the 29th would be the night.
Are you talking, are you talking 20 days?
They're on the same, or weekdays. If they are on the same, that means June 2 would be the open voter registration.
Oh, it would have to be 20 days before the town meeting date of June 22nd.
Correct.
Okay.
As long as they're on the same warrant. If they're not, then there's a different set of rules.
Okay.
That's why I need to know what you're doing before I can set in stone what I have to do.
Right. Lisa, did you have a question?
I'm just, we can also encourage people, rather than coming in to register, to do that online also, correct?
Oh, definitely. I'd much prefer, because there's no way they can get in, the doors are locked. But they can submit a written one. They can go online,
Yep.
register the vote, print it off, put it in the drop box downstairs or drop it in the mail.
Okay.
Right.
So it's not like we would be exposing you potentially to a bunch of people. It's just you have to hold it.
Not, I am aware of right this moment.
Okay.
Okay. Are there any other questions from Peg or Lisa? No? Is there anything you?
Can the moderator put in a law here?
Okay.
You can write a warrant with the election before the annual, before the actual town meeting. It would have a date for the first thing. The election would be Article 1 instead of the last article. And you would have, and to meet on this other date to take up the following articles, which would be two through the end. You can put it on one warrant either way.
Yeah.
And through the chair, with the 20-day, the 20-day period would still apply, correct?
Yes, it goes the 20 days from the first one that's on the same warrant.
Okay.
Date-wise.
Okay. I don't know whether the board wants to take this up right now or do you want to wait until we get to the old business?
I think we can probably, we had planned to choose a date tonight, correct?
Yeah.
So do we have any thoughts on that? I mean, my, my thing would be to give our finance committee as much time as we can to sort of figure out how things are going to play out, but.
And is there anything else you want to add, Barry, before we have some discussion? Are you good?
I'm good right now.
Okay.
What you people have in mind?
I think I had talked with Margaret earlier in the week and we were looking at the calendar and thought about the town meeting being on June 22nd and the election on June 29th. Correct, Margaret?
That's what we talked about, yeah.
And it would give, it would give us time to see, you know, how this is all going to play out as far as the virus. I don't think we want to have it too soon so as to have maybe a lot of elderly people coming together at the same time with a lot of younger people and just a lot of people in general until we get a little bit more of a handle on this. That's my feeling. I don't know if anybody has anything else they want to say.
No, I think those are probably good dates to choose. We don't know for sure when the stay-at-home is even going to lift at this point.
Right.
I've seen, you know, peak being the end of this month, which would still mean quite a significant time where they'd want us to stay home.
And the moderator has authority, expanded authority, under Chapter 39, Section 10A, to call the meeting to, or to open the meeting and then to recess it more than once if necessary. So that's allowed for the moderator too.
Well, that is, that is based on the on there being a local emergency. And obviously, if the state of emergency is still in effect from the governor, that would, that would indicate that. And at the time that we make that declaration, I would consult with the selectmen and other, and Board of other local officials to determine what date we wanted to postpone it to within 30 days. And we could do that multiple times if the state of emergency still exists. But there's no way for us to predict that at this time.
Right. I mean, this is a starting point, I guess.
Yep. I move that we postpone the meeting till June 22nd and the election until the 27th, I think was at the.
29th.
29, when, Monday 29.
And I, I think that's a good starting point. And, you know, I just feel very strongly about bringing people together too soon. If, if things are going well, perhaps the election and the town meeting could be held, whether it's at the same location or not. I don't know how the board feels about the location for town meeting, whether we should move it to the 1870 anyway. Or and the election be downstairs and maybe still have limited hours. I think we have a little bit of time probably before we need to make those decisions. Am I, am I right?
I think so.
But I think we just need to make sure we've got some dates and can get some information together to send out to people.
Eloise? Oh, there you go, okay.
Eloise?
Can I make a statement?
Sure.
I would like the warrant to just hold the minimum of stuff that has been voted unanimously for the last couple of years. You know how we have the first, what, six articles? You see the article, you see the motion? I would like the warrant to be printed like that and just put out the bare necessity. At the point it's safe, you can take up all the rest of the stuff.
Right. And I think Margaret and the FinCom have been working on that.
Yeah, I think that was the intent. We talked about that last week, that we would have the warrant be as, as simple as it could be and as non-controversial.
Okay, thank you.
If we can, if we can include virtually all the motions from the meeting with the warrant this time, that will make people more confident that this is actually what's going to happen. And I'm hoping it will make many of them feel that they could stay home and watch it on TV instead of coming in there and being physically present. And again, mitigating the potential for the disease problem. That's not to say that they can't come or that they can't weigh in, but rather just to, it's a way to discourage actual attendance at the meeting, I would hope. And therefore, we can have a meeting with less people actually present in the hall and get through the business that's vital to get done at that time.
Right.
Through the chair, we can definitely include the motions on the warrant.
So Lisa, you've made a motion. Peg, did I hear a second?
You did. And after I second it, I will ask a question behind it.
Okay. Go for it.
So my only, I agree in part with Eloise to move it at the town hall. But my concern is A, parking, and B, accessibility, even though we have the elevator in the back, which can get people upstairs. You can't quite fit a bunch of cars up there. Where at the school, it's flatter and it's just easier to get people into the building. So again, you know, to everyone's point, who knows what June is going to bring? Who knows if this date is even going to happen? But I just think for accessibility, if you want people to come out, the school is going to be much more agreeable to those folks than trying to have them get up to 1870, up to the second floor.
Yeah, I think you can also, you can assess this much closer to the meeting when you have to get the warrant out too. You don't need to, we don't need to do anything with this right now, so.
Yeah.
So the time to discuss it is now, before everything's cast in stone.
Yeah, I sort of agree with Peg, only because I think you're right, the parking is a little bit of an issue. I know that years ago, we used to be able to go to the 1870 for town meeting. I'm not sure if the numbers have increased since then. I know that most likely, school will not be in session. And they have done a pretty good job of doing a total cleaning of the school. I think Mr. Positari, the, is it the building maintenance person? Has done some work even for us at the municipal building. I don't think it would be difficult if they had to readjust the gym area and the hallway and bathrooms.
Excuse me, through the chair, the principal has confirmed that the, the school is available on the 22nd and the 23rd if necessary, because school is planned to be out of session then.
Right. I don't, they probably haven't talked about whether they're going to tack on any days at the end, but most likely not, correct?
It doesn't, at this point, doesn't, that's unknown. It doesn't appear so.
Right. So I suppose if school wasn't session for some reason, then we could choose a different location. I would imagine they'll be making a decision on that pretty quickly.
In the, in the current news, it has been, it's very much under consideration to, to not bring school back before the end of this year.
Right. Yeah. I suspect that probably is the case. So, anyway, we do have a motion on the table.
Margaret has a question.
May I ask the board to include, if, if you know, could you please include the annual town meeting start time and the location in your vote?
Yes, the start time, I would imagine, would be 7:30. And we would plan to do it at the school at this point. And the elections, I don't know what's your, what's your pleasure as far as the location for the election?
Is it 7:00 or 7:30 that it starts?
7:30.
Okay. And let's just do the school.
The school for the town meeting?
Correct.
Okay.
And if you need a location, let's do the school.
And do you want to use a tentative location for the election also?
Yeah, I mean, go ahead. If I cut someone off.
I mean, I would assume the same places, because if it's safe enough to do this, then it's safe enough to do this. And if it's not, it's not, and we need to push it forward anyways. So changing everything around for when we don't even know, it doesn't make sense.
Right.
If it's safe, it's safe. If it's not, it's not, then we, you need to push it forward again.
Okay, I agree.
The one thing about the election you should decide is the hours, as Eloise has already mentioned that particular issue.
Okay.
That was 12 to 4 on that day. I mean, obviously, you know, there's going to be concern about the total turnout. I think if you move location, you're going to cause confusion by habit. People are just going to drive down to the school, yeah, drive down to the town hall, you know, to vote, or town offices, rather, to vote and have it 12 to 4. I know that Eloise mentioned she'd have minimal staff to help make sure that that's, you know, that's okay. You know, I don't know if, Margaret, we could enlist the help of, you know, maybe one of the janitors so that as people come in, they're kind of like right behind them, cleaning it up. So it's just not one more thing for Eloise and her crew to have to do to, you know, wipe down the station or wipe down the pen. Who knows, maybe people will bring their own pen, you know.
As the chief elections official, Eloise can decide who she wants there to assist with that and we can make those arrangements.
My only concern with those hours is if people do have to go to work.
I would assume they would use an absentee or an early ballot.
Yeah, they would have to.
Yeah, I, I know. It's just, it's, you're basically removing that option from a good, good. Yeah, I, I know. It's just, it's, you're, you're basically removing that option from a good, good percentage of the population.
I would send the ballot out at town expense and it would come back at, at a government expense.
For absentee ballots? Okay. Well, it might be the safest way to go at this point. And like you said, if it's safe, it's safe. If it's not.
I, I guess, once again, though, if you're going to do that, then wouldn't it make sense to, rather than noon to four, do four to eight or something where?
It has the earliest, the latest it can open is noon.
Okay.
Okay.
And the minimum is it must be open for a minimum of four hours. And right now, those three hours of towns that are double our population.
Okay.
It's a crisis time and we're trying to handle it in a crisis manner.
And I think people will try and work around it. They, they will.
Well, I mean, the thing is too, is that we're just going to have to be on top of this for communication and make sure that the word gets out continually as a reminder, you know, your absentee ballot, it's in the mail. You know, it's going to be in the same place.
They have to send in an application.
All right. Then that process, Eloise, absolutely needs to be outlined and we need to get that out to the public and get it out.
I believe Mary put it up online today.
Um, I'm sure we could also use either the blinky sign down by the, uh, golf course. And I'm sure if we reached out to the Lions Club, that they would also assist in putting something up on the white sign in the middle of the town. So.
Okay.
Okay. So we'll go back to, we've got a motion and I think we've chosen the 29th or the 22nd of June for the town meeting, the 29th for the election. The town meeting would start at 7:30. The election would be 12 to four on the 29th. Am I missing anything?
I would just repeat the locations, Chris, that the town meeting is at the school and the elections will remain in place at the town offices downstairs with, you know, a potential new way to get into the room, but, uh, buildings are still the same.
Yeah. And I'm sure we'll have plenty of signage. So what Peg said?
Yeah, there you go.
Okay. So we've got a motion to that effect and a second. Am I correct?
Indeed.
Okay. I'll call for a vote then. Keith, aye?
Voiceaki, aye.
Stone, aye.
Okay. I think it's a vote.
Thank you.
So, thank you so much, Eloise and Barry. Stick around if you choose.
Thanks, Eloise.
You're welcome.
And, um, I guess we'll move on to the annual town report committee. Do we have members from the annual town report committee? Is Barry or do we have, uh, anyone else?
I thought Laurie was going to come, but I don't know if she's here yet. She's also dealing with her three-year-old grandson.
Okay. So I, I think what, what we were looking for and, um, I know Peg, you had said you had some concerns about just wondering where we are with the town report.
Yeah, agreed. I mean, um, you know, obviously before this virus hit, everyone was in motion to get things to the town committee to have it done. So I, I'd very much like to see a draft of where we are, you know, kind of going back to Eloise's point, you know, what's, what's in there? Uh, I'm also a little bit concerned about where it's going to get printed and how it's going to get printed and when it needs to get printed by, because obviously we're not going to be the only town who's pushing, uh, for probably mid to end of June. You know, given the, the virus and even if it's safe, back then, safe being a relative term, we can't have a sticker party. So we're going to have to need to come up with a plan B, uh, to get those all labeled and get them on the books and get them out in, uh, more than a few days before the town meeting. So that's why I was kind of hoping that we'd have a draft of it tonight. You know, I was hoping to be able to split it to say, you know, Lisa has this section, Chris, Peg, go through it, check for spelling mistakes. Obviously there's still information to come in from finance, um, but was truly hoping to get a copy of it tonight and avoid the issues that we've had in the past few years with getting it out and to the town.
So would, would it be possible, is there a draft, Barry, that you could send to us at some point this week?
We can send you a, a very partial draft. Laurie is working hard now at trying to get it all laid out. We've still got a few elements to to get in, but most all of it we've got. And of course, then there's the matter of the warrant and the finance committee's report.
Right.
We have, uh, she has been, she's had the childcare on top of her regular job of late. So we don't have quite as much done in that line as we might normally. One question I would put before the board is the school reports. The school sends us all their stuff. I mean, we've even got the report of the Boylston Elementary School. The superintendent, all these reports deal with both places as well as the, as well as the high school. How much of that you want to print and what that is for pages and so forth is, is another question. I'm trying, I'm not trying to ask for as many things as I have sometimes in the past because I'm trying to cut down on the pages, especially in that area. But what's your reaction to all of that?
That's a good question. That's a good question.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I have time, so I would like to see whatever Laurie has by Thursday of this week. And as I said, you know, at night, I'm more than willing to pitch in and see if there's anything that needs to be done and help, but I just, I think we just need to, to go forward that, you know, the meeting is, is set for the June 22nd. That we need to move forward as that is our date and we have what we have. And we know that there's a couple of items that still need to come in, but we need to really get going on this and for the selectmen, you know, to step up and help as much as possible, putting things together, formatting, spell check, et cetera.
The formatting is really done by one person and that's how that works best. Because then the format is uniform and Laurie does that extremely well. And, and I have confidence she will get that done.
And she has the software to do it. So.
Yeah, she has the software to do it and have it all uniform. And the great thing is that she can deal with things that are diverse and bring them all out together without having to do things over. That's, that's very good as it is. I have been in contact with King Printing, which has printed our town report for over 20 years, most every time. And, um, they are working and they are able to print and, uh, they want, the one thing is they want 10 days to get it out. So that means that if we're talking about the, uh, you know, roughly the first of June to the printer, we're fine.
Well, it, it has to be in the households, what, a week early?
Five days before.
Okay.
No, it has to go in the mail or be delivered five days before the meeting. And we have generally said that meant you had to have it out by two. Now, as far as the sticker party is concerned, we can do a sticker party because we can do one with about five people. We've done it in the past with five people.
Yeah, but I don't think that we can rely on a sticker party. I think that we need to have plan Bs. I think that we need to have another, uh, printer just in case. Again, are they going to be totally overwhelmed by all the cities and towns coming to them? That we should have something in place. And, um, I think we need to start looking at automation.
Based, based on my interaction with the printer, they're going to get it to us. I, I, I can't even say enough about the, what they've dealt with from us and gotten it to us. So I am not concerned about the printer at all unless the place, like unless he keels over and the place shuts its doors. I'm not concerned about the printer and then you have other problems. So.
And they can sticker the book also with that and send them out?
They can't sticker it because Eloise is the one who prints out the stickers, I believe.
That's right. We have to do the stickers locally.
But you could do something where you set boxes outside the town offices. You know, take your box, take it home, have it back here by X. It, it, this, this shouldn't be complicated. It shouldn't.
It's, it's, it really, I mean, we have done the stickers with, you know, four or five people.
Yeah. You can even.
And we've done the whole thing in an hour. So I really think that if we took a longer time, if we even had one day, you know, three people could do the whole thing and have it ready to go to them.
And you could even take it if people are still in their offices. You could plop a box outside everybody's office with a stack of stickers. This is not, this is not something to be concerned about. Getting the book done, that's, you know, we want to get the book done. But getting it printed and getting it stickered, those are the least of our worries.
So can we, Margaret, can we get a confirmation that with the exception of FinCom, just because of where we are and leaving the schools out, that all the other committees have, and departments have stepped up and we have everything?
I don't have a report on any, but I don't have a report on who submitted or who hasn't submitted yet. So Barry, uh, Barry or Laurie or whoever is compiling those, I'm happy to send out.
Through the list, I've cajoled a few people. There may be two or three things left to get. And what I'm really waiting for now is for Laurie to get a layout done so that I can verify anything that is left out at this point. And it, there's not much.
So, um, Barry posed a question to us about, do we want the book to be the same as it has been over the last couple of years where it's only the Berlin Memorial School and Tohoto? Or are we going to include Boylston Elementary and their reports also because we're now regionalized? So I'm posing that to the board. I think, how, it, I think to me, it depends on, do you think people will read the, the reports from Boylston or not?
No.
I, I think it's all still, I mean.
Berlin related?
Yeah.
Okay.
It'll be the report of the regional, the regional school district.
Regional, yeah, you'll get the regional school district report from the superintendent and the finance director. And probably some of the other, um, administration, say for example, the, um, special ed director. And I can't think of, oh, technology perhaps. So you'll get all of those. It just wouldn't include Boylston Elementary perhaps for this year. And then maybe we can rethink it again next year.
So you know what? Let's draw a line in the sand now, uh, because we can beat this thing till we can't beat it anymore. If Lisa and Barry are confident that the printer can turn it around and they have a plan in place to get the stickers done, then I make a motion that we have a draft in hand no later than April 25th. That gives Laurie with the issues that she's having, that gives her two weeks, two and a half weeks to get it done. I think that's plenty.
Through the point that Barry mentioned, oh, through the chair, through the point that, uh, to the point that Barry mentioned about the warrant and the finance committee's report, uh, the warrant should be no problem at all, since the board has already gone over a significant portion of the warrant and now has trimmed it down. Um, and the finance committee's report, uh, it's a report that's required to be in the warrant, but it may not be in the form everyone's used to because the finance committee is really, really challenged this year with recommendations. I think they'll do their best to come up with responsible recommendations and an explanation as to what's gone on this year. That's so highly unusual. But I don't see any reason why the warrant and the finance committee's report can't be done in a timely manner.
And if you can send us a draft before the 25th, that would be great.
So can we do a draft by the 15th, which is a week and a half, and then the final, the week after? That's plenty of time if things have to slide.
I, I'm just asking, you're, you're talking about now the, the town meeting on June 22nd. It wouldn't need to be the, to the printer. I mean, even if you had that to the printer on June 1st, you're, you're awesomely good and better than we've ever been.
I don't, I don't think we want to wait that long.
No, no, here's my concern is that, um, we do this every year and whether it's, we're doing it as sitting in the positions we are as selectmen, or I would sit at home and I would wait for my book to show up, that it just seems that things always slid, slid, slid because we have plenty of time, because we have plenty of time. There wasn't a sense of urgency, uh, you know, like we did with the information being in by a certain date. If you missed it, you missed it. So what? Oh, well. Uh, I think we need to start having that mentality towards getting the report done instead of, oh, well, we have plenty of time. We have plenty of time. And then we don't have plenty of time.
But we also probably do want to give the finance committee, I mean, the whole point in, in delaying the town, I mean, one of the points in delaying this is to make sure that we give the finance committee time to come up with the appropriate recommendations when we know more. And we're not, probably not going to know that by April 25th. I mean, certainly all of the stuff, you could get a, an initial draft, but that particular piece of the document, I wouldn't send it to print until, until the finance committee has time to solidify their recommendations a little bit more.
So I would probably get a draft by the 25th. Is that reasonable?
You can get a draft of what we have at that time. And, and that will depend on some of these other things as to how they get done. I don't know, I've never, ever had to submit a draft to the board of selectmen before. We've gotten the book done and we've printed it and put it out. And if, if it's, uh, I, I get Peg's concern that we not put it out too long and that makes very good sense to me. And it may well be that even after we go to print, the finance committee will need to revise things a bit more before they actually go to the meeting. And that has happened before too, where they, uh, submitted a slightly revised figures for the meeting. But that would only be if they can't figure it out before that and if other things change in the, in the ensuing period. Let me, let me spend, let me talk to Laurie and let me also look at the calendar now that you've made the decision about when the meeting is. And then I can perhaps suggest back when we can, when we could do that efficiently.
Okay.
Does that make sense? I mean, we, we didn't know the, I didn't even know we were going to be later than June 1st with town meeting until this evening. So. I think that it's, uh, I think it makes sense for us to look at that and come back and answer Peg's, uh, inquiry with, uh, something prior to your next meeting.
And I think what would reassure people is just if there was an actual date where there was an expectation that it will be done on this date. So I think that's really what people are looking for. And then if it's not, then, you know, we need to take steps. But I think if you could give that date of it will be done on this date, I promise, and you hand it over, then I think that's, that's really helpful.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. And we'll look forward to a draft at, uh, on or around the 25th.
No later than the 25th. Well, actually, the 25th is a Saturday, I think. Hang on. April, yeah, the 25th is a Saturday. So, yeah, 20, well, well, no, I'd like to see it on the 24th because if there's any reading, I'd like to look at it over the weekend and be prepared if we have to talk about it on the 27th instead of losing another week by getting it the Monday of the meeting.
Okay.
So I'd like to have it no later than the 24th, which is Friday.
Okay.
Off Friday.
Is that reasonable? Barry?
I'll talk to Laurie and we'll see what we can do.
Okay.
We'll try to meet something on that one.
Why don't you send us an email, let us know.
Material to get in, get it in.
Yeah.
Rather than later.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Uh, we're running a little bit late. Finance committee, um, are, is. All right, uh, we're running a little bit late. Finance committee, um, are, is finance committee, um, in attendance?
I see at least one member there. Janice.
Okay. So we were going to, correct me if I'm wrong, Margaret, we were going to talk about the FY 20 budget and the FY 20 budget preparations.
Yeah. So a lot of this is going to be kind of a rehashing of, um, a little bit of what you've talked about last week. Um, I don't know, Janet, are you, uh, able to talk?
Well, I thought Stan and Mike were joining, but I guess not. Um, well, the finance committee has, um, discussed some options under Margaret's advisement. Um, we're still, we're waiting for, uh, some more information from the state, which I did see Margaret, while we've been meeting, sent out a letter that we did, uh, get notification that most of our monies would be coming. Is that how I understood that? It's kind of, I'm a little nervous that that's exactly what it said. I read it twice.
We don't want to seem, we don't want to seem too hopeful, right? But, um, you know, when I, when I spoke with, um, when I spoke with Hank's legislative aide, you know, we've been talking about declining revenues in the fourth quarter this fiscal year. And I, I do expect decline, um, in the fourth quarter revenues this year. But he doesn't expect us to see a drop or nine C cuts in UGA or the unrestricted general government aid this fiscal year.
Right.
So he couldn't, he couldn't guarantee it, but he doesn't think it will happen. Meanwhile, we've implemented the FY 20 spending freeze in order to try to control costs and be able to absorb some of the revenue losses we anticipate in the fourth quarter.
So we were toying, not knowing a lot of this last week with, um, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, Margaret, still going on the 112th. Is that how we decided to go?
I think we're, well, I mean, we're thinking about that, um, but the legislation does allow that so-called 112th or month-to-month, uh, budget. If the town is unable to adopt a budget by the end of the fiscal year, by June 30th. So if we go to town meeting and we still don't have very clear revenue pictures and we really can't, or the finance committee cannot make, uh, firm recommendations, um, the moderator could choose to recess town meeting and we could adopt the budget after the start of the fiscal year. Um, and it would be adopted on a month-to-month basis, meaning we would have the authority to expend money for the month of July. And the person who's giving that approval would be the director of the Department of Revenue. So we would have to do that and we would have spending approved for each month that we do not have a budget adopted. There are, there are deadlines as to when, when we have to adopt a budget. But this could go on in July, August, September. So, um, doing.
Janet, you should know that the selectmen have voted to hold town meeting on the 22nd of June.
Yeah, I know. I, I've been here through the whole meeting. I was here at seven. Yeah, no, I, I know, I.
You knew that.
No, I do know that. Um, now I lost my train of thought.
You are.
Well, there's some, there's some budgets that we, we have to, um, approve despite not knowing where the money's coming from. Like for instance, the, um, transfer station with the cost of, um, uh, removal, trash removal. And now, uh, paying for, to get rid of our, uh, plastics and glass and our paper and cardboard. Those fees have gone up a tremendous amount and, um, Sue and Paul and Bobby have been, especially Sue, have been working very, very hard, uh, trying to, um, give us a figure and she's gone back and forth. But the market now, especially with all that's gone on, is so unstable. I mean, we, we can't shut our dump down or our transfer station, excuse me. So, you know, there's some things in the budget that we've already said, okay, that's going to have to be the way it's going to have to be. And we'll have to, you know, figure out, you know, where we're going to get the monies. Um, but Margaret has been a tremendous blessing and I don't know what we would have done if COVID were last year.
Well, you would have, you would have done. Everybody has to, everybody has to.
It would be.
But, um, anyways, we're, we're, we were going to meet Wednesday, but I think we're actually not going to meet. We're going to wait a week, see if what everybody else has, um, decided, the, giving the department heads a little bit more time to look at their own budgets and see where they have to make cuts. Because now we're literally talking basically level of funding freezing and no overtime. And they need to relook at all that. Um, so I think we were giving them this week to do that and then get back to, excuse me, back to us on the 22nd, if I'm not mistaken. Is that right, Margaret?
They were supposed, they're supposed to have feedback, um, submitted by this Friday.
Excuse me, the 15th. I'm, I'm one week ahead, the 15th.
Right. And it'll be for your meeting. Yeah.
Yeah. So we'll be meeting again on the 15th and it's our hope that we get that done and, um, so you all can look at it. And we've gone along, uh, and approved everything that you've approved. Um, there hasn't been any real controversy as to approving what the selectmen have already approved. Um, with little change and the only one department that I know that we are just going to have to, uh, grin and bear it is the, um, Board of Health. And I don't know with all this, um, right now, if those, their own department then is already needing more funding because of COVID. I haven't heard anything. Um, have you, Margaret?
They have, uh, to date, they don't. They've been dealing with all kinds of other COVID-related issues. But no, they have not incurred significant costs yet, um, requiring them to deficit spend or anything. So, uh, we've been fortunate, but they've been extremely busy.
Oh, I, I can imagine. I, on my end have, I'm working twice as fast, twice as hard, twice as much being at home.
It's a constant flow, it's a constant flow of information.
So much easier to go to work because you're my fourth teleconference webinar, whatever you want to call it today, you know? So.
It's tiring, doesn't it?
It is.
It's, it's, you know, there's, we've, we've been dealing with now since March 10th, a constant flow of information. Every hour of every day, it seems some new information is coming in.
And all unprecedented. We don't know what's coming. You know, something's going to happen, but we don't know what it is.
Yeah. So, uh, you know, the good news is that the town was already being proactive with the FY 21 budget. The finance committee and the board were ahead of the game. And the board was ahead of the game with the town meeting warrant. So there's a lot that's in place, thankfully. Uh, there was a lot that was in place before this, this happened. So it's, it's a good thing.
So I really don't have much to report other than we're kind of waiting and it sounds like Friday is the deadline. So we will all reconvene next Wednesday night and I want to say it's our plan that we get it all done.
So Janet, a question for you. If we're going to get a draft from Barry and Laurie on the 24th, you're not meeting Wednesday, the 8th, correct? I know, I'm looking at a calendar too.
We'll be meeting the 15th and the 22nd.
All right.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but we'll be done, won't we?
Mary Porter has been working on the finance committee's annual town report.
Okay.
So I think that the finance.
Done. That draft was done last week. We all looked at it. We've been doing Google. I haven't seen, I didn't have anything to add. She did an amazing job. So our, that is finished. The only thing we're still working on is the budget. And our goal is to be done by the 22nd.
So Janet, can, uh, when you meet again on the 15th, can you work with Mary Porter? And make sure that she gets whatever written material either needs to go to Barry or it needs to go to Laurie, so it can be included in.
I, I don't know why they're not here. I will send them an email the minute I get off.
I did text Stan. He just got home from work. So I said, you look like you had it under control and the meeting is delayed. So he probably didn't need to jump on.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I know there really wasn't much to say, um, but I mean, we've really worked hard at, at listening to what people have told us in, uh, trying to keep, uh, taxes, uh, down because of last year's, um, did I just cut out? Did I just?
Oh, you're on, you're on set.
Just give it a pause.
Um, you know, trying to, trying to keep things, um, you know, the best we can, um, looking at the whole picture, I guess is what I'm trying to say. Cause I know there were a lot of unhappy people when the tax bills came out last year. Um, and we really are looking at, at that, which is now with this is COVID has added a little bit more of a challenge. But I still think we're, we are going to be able to do a, a good job, um, I think. Margaret's shaking her head, so that's.
I do. I know, I do. I, I said today in an email to FinCom that I think, you know, um, that the finance committee and the board have both been proactive. And I think the town is well positioned, uh, to be able to determine what revenues it has and what, what it doesn't have and, um, how those revenues are going to be allocated. So I think it's, it's, we're doing much better than I'm sure many other communities, uh, are, are going to be doing.
Well, we appreciate the work you're doing on the finance committee, all of you.
Yeah, it has been a very, um, I can't, I've learned so much this year and, um, have really enjoyed, uh, enjoyed it. And, um, it's just been, it's just been, it's amazing what that committee is responsible for. I had, um, I had an idea since I attend town meeting every year, but, um, now I can actually speak to the levy and all of that. It's been, uh, very enlightening and I'm, I'm kind of proud of myself, if I do say so myself.
Good job. And I want to, I want to, uh, to do a shout out to June too, uh, because she's, um, she's always prepared with numbers, always.
And June has been great and Mary has been good and we've all, um, I, I think it's been a really, we've all really had, um, really tried really hard to do, to the, do the best for the town. And that's what we keep saying. We want to do the best for the town.
Yep.
Okay then.
All right. Have a good night. I'm going to stay on, but I'm going to get, get out of here.
Doesn't it remind you of that TV show where we all look at each other?
Brady Bunch.
Yeah. Okay, um, we've done the town administrator report, so we're going to move on to old business, which I believe we did take the vote for the annual town ma- meeting will be on June 22nd. And the vote for town elections will be on June 29th. But we also have to do, take a look at the articles for inclusion in the 2020 annual town meeting warrant. And she disappears.
No, I went, I disappeared to my folder. I have to just go in my folder. It's down here. Um, okay, so the board has the draft, a town meeting warrant. Uh, I am going to, I guess I'll just go through, rather than go through this entire draft town meeting warrant. And Barry, I'm going to give you a copy of this too. Um, the board had already taken action to include several articles. There are some now that I don't think are ab, I'm, I'm not recommending or absolutely urgent to include on this town meeting warrant. Um, so I, I too would recommend that, um, uh, that the board stick with the, uh, routine housekeeping articles, um, other, uh, non-controversial articles and only those, um, priority articles that the town would deem, uh, most urgent. So, uh, any kind of urgent funding articles. So I'm going to list them. Um, for the FY 20 portion of the town meeting, I would recommend keeping in the five articles that were voted at the 2019 annual town meeting, um, and revote them. Uh, they would be presented exactly as they appeared in 2019. The summaries would be exactly the same underneath each of those. The only change would be a date of, uh, the effective date for the plastic bag ban. Now, the reason, um, I'm still suggesting including these is because I do have information from the legislature that all other actions on all other legislation have been put on hold. So if we thought that the, the legislature might have been dragging its feet before on this, it's probably buried even deeper now, this, this validation of, of last year's town meeting. So I recommend keeping those on. The next is, um, to fund the FY 20 snow and ice deficit from free cash. If there is in fact a deficit, there may be a small one, and I would recommend, uh, putting that on to be funded from free cash. The council on aging van. Now, this is an FY 20 item because it was included in the legislature's budget this year, the $60,000. We are still waiting at the moment, um, for a quote on the van as we need it equipped. And if any supplemental local funding is needed, it should be appropriated in FY 20. So I, I, I would, um, recommend including that on the town meeting warrant. And that money could be, uh, or that funding could be from the senior affordable housing account, uh, which is the same account that funded the used COA van that town currently has. Um, the next item is the fire EMS pump, pumper tanker that was actually voted, um, and, uh, funded last year. Um, however, the sunset clause was set at June 30th, 2020. So all money had to be expended by June 30th, 2020, simply asking to extend that to June 30th, 2021. If the contract's already signed, the truck is being constructed, just need to extend the sunset clause. And then finally on FY 20, um, Peter Hoffman did request this and I have spoken with, uh, Tim Wheeler on the planning board. He's fine with it. And Barry, you can weigh in on this too, if you'd like. This is the article for the Economic Development Committee. Um, Peter had requested that the committee fall under the appointing authority of the planning board and to have the number of members set by the planning board. So this article simply asks for the change in the appointing authority and to have the number of members set by the planning board. Currently, it's a joint appointment, Board of Selectmen and Planning Board. Um, FY 21, I recommend all, all six, uh, standard consent articles be included. Um, those are annual articles. Um, I would recommend that you include the authorization for the board to enter into contracts greater than three years. Um, this would be new, um, this would be a new article, uh, here in Berlin. It's, it's considered a consent article in many other towns. And so maybe after this year, you could, you could actually include it in the list of consent articles. But because it's new, it could be standalone. Um, outstanding 2019 annual town reports, that's a standard article. Uh, revaluation fund for appraising utilities if this is needed. Um, so the Department of Revenue is requiring, um, that, that, uh, uh, revaluation be done, uh, to appraise, um, the, how utilities are valued. Um, and if this is needed, and Molly is still looking into this, if this is needed, um, the amount would be funded, well, we'd be asking for the amount to, uh, to be funded from the assessor's overlay surplus because that's an appropriate funding source for that. Next is, um, the payment of plumbing, gas and wiring inspection fees. Now, the town, um, uh, as you know, the inspectors are paid from offset receipts, those offset, the offset receipts are, um, are appropriated as a revenue source to pay for the wages of the inspectors each year. However, some of the projects that the inspectors are working on will last beyond this fiscal year. And, and, um, offset receipts, the funding source itself can't carry year to year. So it is possible that we may have to appropriate some money from free cash to supplement the offset receipts that are paid to the, um, inspectors. It should be a wash, but if not enough is appropriated or not enough offset, uh, receipts are set aside for the wages, um, that we could fall short. So June is assessing now whether we need that one. The next is the cable access committee's article. That's to fund FY 21 operating and capital, uh, expenses. And that would be fully funded from the PEG Access and Cable Related Fund. Uh, the next one would be the FY 21 budget. Uh, and there are a few capital costs that are included in the operating budget. We're trying to work on those. Uh, first is the Berlin Memorial School Capital Assessment, which is $120,000 for FY 21. Capital Assessment, which is $120,000 for FY21. I have reached out to the school to see if they would be willing at all to defer some of the capital assessment to a future town meeting, because that is a good chunk of change. They said they might be willing, and I know the committee has to vote this, but they said they might be willing to defer a couple of the smaller items totaling $25,000. But they do have concerns about the safety of the access to the mechanical systems at Berlin Memorial School, and that's a $95,000 project. The next is the Ladder Truck Debt Service. So the Capital Planning Committee has already voted, and the Finance Committee is discussing reducing the amount funded from Highland Commons Public Safety Mitigation Funds from the full payoff amount down to $119,912 to pay down the debt service on the ladder truck from that source. And the reason they voted it is because they feel that it's important, not knowing what the revenues are gonna look like in the few months ahead, they felt that it was important to be able to assess what we're up against revenue wise and to be able to hold, hold on to $115,000 to $116,000 for the payoff on the ladder truck, at least for the time being. It is possible, it is possible that if a future special town meeting is called before October 1st, when the debt service is due, the town could actually appropriate the remainder and pay off the ladder truck debt service then. I know I'm talking too much. I'm just reading my sheet, so hopefully I'm making sense. The next is the Capital Planning Committee. These are capital items. So the Capital Planning Committee did vote to revise its recommendations. I did, I had a late addition to the Board's Agenda Packet tonight. They voted to reduce in total the capital recommendations for FY21 from $945,801 down to $565,212. And because some of those items would be deferred to a special town meeting, and one of the items in particular, the, the recommended funding, seed funding for the Capital Stabilization Fund would be reduced to $100 this year from that source. So the items that they thought were the highest priority were the Fire EMS Scuba Replacement, the scuba gear. That's $59,560. The Fire EMS Personal Protective Equipment, $38,640. The Police Vehicle Replacement of $53,000. The Police Video Recording and Storage System, $20,000. And all of those items that I just listed would be funded, funded from Highland Commons Public Safety Mitigation Funds. The next item, because it is grant dependent, is the 23 Linden Parking Lot Reconstruction. That is a total project cost of $205,000. No, it's a total project cost of $230,000, $25,000 of which is going to be forward funded from the state grant. So that leaves $205,000 in project costs. And of that amount, $75,000 would be reimbursed from the FY20 Housing Choice Grant and returned to the, the General Fund to serve as a base for FY21 free cash. And then finally, I just mentioned the establishing the Capital Stabilization. This is a special stabilization fund. The Board had already voted to include this in the, in the warrant, by the way. But the Capital Planning Committee reduced the seed funding from $125,000 from free cash down to $100, just to show a commitment to establishing that fund. In addition to that, we do have a balance in the Highland Commons Capital Contribution Account totaling $4,341.16 that could be, that could be transferred into the new Capital Stabilization Fund. And then finally, Special Article Closeouts, what we don't use. From the prior special, special articles to fund other capital projects would be closed out to their original funding sources. That's it. Did I put everybody to sleep? Did I put everyone?
Still here.
Hey, wake up.
So those are all, those are all my recommendations. It's significantly pared down, because as you can see, it doesn't include any new bylaw proposals. Yeah, that's primarily the big thing. I mean, moving all of those bylaw proposals off. I did talk with, again, I talked with Tim Wheeler. He was fine with deferring all of his to a special.
Barry, is there anything that you see any concerns with in that list?
No, no, I think that sounds fine.
All right. Do you need a vote to, final vote for all of the things that you've listed?
You'd like to, if the Board would be willing to vote on the ones I listed, just keeping open the possibility that given our revenue situation, we might have to add another, that would be great.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve the warrant as it stands with the potential for further revision.
And a second.
I'll call for a vote. Keith, I.
Saki, I.
Stone, I.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
All right. And she's disappeared again.
Oh. We're not done yet. I might need to have my folder a little closer to me, I guess. Okay.
All right. So we're moving on to new business, which is the, first thing is the ratification of the COVID Emergency Responders Exemptions.
Okay, I'll try to be succinct here. The federal government just recently passed the Families First Coronavirus Response Act that contains provisions for emergency sick leave for employees and provisions for extended family and medical leave. Municipalities are given, are given the option of excluding and quote, emergency responders, defined emergency responders from one or both of those provisions. I think it's really important to not exclude any employees from the emergency sick leave provisions. I, I think that given the, given the work that the, the emergency responders are doing right now and their potential exposure, I think it's extremely important to not exclude them from the emergency paid sick leave provisions. However, because we know that our staffing resources are finite and we need our emergency responders now more than ever, I would like the Board's ratification to exclude from the expanded family and medical leave under the Federal Act of all emergency responders that we have on our staff.
Any questions?
If you need to know specifically what that means, I can tell you.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
And seconded. I want Margaret to.
Vote. Keith, I.
Saki, I.
Stone, I.
Okay, to the vote.
Nova. Hey.
That sounds like a black lab.
That is a black lab.
Did that dog get big?
Well, she's not actually. She's only 55 pounds. She's got a big bark though.
Yes, she does.
My, my pugs, my pugs, my, my Frenchies barks. All right. So we need to talk about the renewal of the 2020 Junk Scrap Metal License with the ongoing restrictions or conditions for Berlin Auto Parts at 76 Coburn Road. My understanding is that all of the department heads necessary have either had things, issues that have been taken care of, or that they don't have any issues.
Correct. That's correct. And you have the list of the, the local reviewers' comments in your folder.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Okay, I'll call for a vote. Keith, I. Keith, I.
Saki, I.
Okay.
Stone, I.
Okay. I thought I was alone. All right. So we're down to Board Questions and Comments. And I actually have one, or a comment. So I had a resident request for the Board to show support for the small businesses in Berlin. She's concerned that a lot of the small businesses are gonna go under during this health crisis. And she thought that perhaps if the Board showed that we supported them in some way, shape, or form, perhaps we can think of some different ways to support them, that people would understand the importance of supporting the local businesses. And one of the things I was thinking of was to share the, I don't know if it's on the website, the CARES Act, is that on our town website? So that if there's information that the small businesses need to find, it would be on our website?
I, I'm not on the website at the moment, but I do know that we have put up information. In fact, we had, we had a summary of information put up there by the Economic Development Committee. So that is up on our website.
Okay. Cause there was some good information on, I believe they were loans or that kind of thing.
Yep.
And the other thing I was thinking of is perhaps the blinky sign to support your local Berlin businesses.
Do we want to do something where we either highlight certain local businesses or put up a list of those who are still, whether it be restaurants or whatever, who are still doing takeout or those types of things? Is that an area that we want to go?
Or I was also wondering whether there is a list of local businesses that perhaps Eloise has. I should have asked her. Just.
Well, I think there was a nice one that went through. Somebody had put up on Neighbors Connect just of, of some of the businesses in town that were still, you know, where you could do pickup, where you could do those types of things. I mean, I don't want to leave people out, but I, I are getting into that sort of thing. But it might be a place to start if we just want to put up, these businesses are still available for you during this time in this fashion. I don't know.
I think it was Bob Blair, Lisa, or I saw the same list. So, you know.
That's right.
Chris, I don't know if you want to reach out to him and get the list, and then we can post it. And then if there's people missing, businesses missing, we can add them. You know, that, that works.
I can go grab it and send it over and, you know, whether it's, we throw, you know.
I actually did read it, I think. Yeah, it was on the Berlin Neighbors Connect, correct?
Yes. Yep. Yeah, hey, we went up to Balance Rock this weekend, got some milk and some other fun things up there. The people up there are absolutely sweet. You can be met by Gruff, their giant barn cat, who is all lovey. So absolutely anything that we can point, you know, folks to get out there and help these businesses, that'd be great.
And I know a lot of the, the social distancing is still very important. But, you know, should you need milk, you could, there are numbers of different places you could go in town.
Right.
Or food, takeout, that kind of thing. So, I mean, there's just numerous. I don't know if we want to concentrate on one over another. Or maybe one day we just say, support your local takeout restaurants, and then another day just so support the local businesses in Berlin on, on the blinky sign.
If we can get the names up, then, you know, we can ask Dave to go down to the blinky sign and do, you know, hashtag support your local business, see town of Berlin, blah, 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 you know, for listing, you know, maybe that. And same thing with the Alliance Club. We can get them to post something up in the center of town.
And I could probably also ask Eloise if she has a list of businesses, if it's posted anywhere.
The thing is, we don't know who's open and who's not, which is why I suggested the ones that we know. And then if somebody else wants to be added to the list, they can certainly request or whatever. But there were, there were several, I mean, we don't have a ton, a ton of those types of businesses in town.
Yeah.
But if.
No, it's just that they, you know, they're small businesses, small enough so that maybe not everyone knows about them.
If we start with those, maybe there's something we can do. Mary, I'm not, not to volunteer our town website or our Facebook page, but maybe there's something we can do, like, you know, like Lisa said, we could feature a business and we could say underneath that, are you a local business that would like to get, you know, that would like to get its, you know, get information out there to the public that you're still open? Let us know. And we could feature you too.
I mean, this is not, we have a, a community and business section of our website for purposes like this. So it's something that could continue.
Okay.
Later also, and they could just stay up there.
Well, I mean, Chris, it's interesting that you said you were approached. Peter Hoffman reached out to me yesterday and again, wanted to make a plug to the Economic Development Committee. He also has a little ditty on the Berlin Neighbors Connect about information from the Mass, Massachusetts Office of Business Development, where there's programs about unemployment insurance, you know, that are applicable. It talks to unemployment insurance for entrepreneurs, paycheck protection programs, economic injury, disaster loans. So definitely hit up the EDC page, reach out to Peter Hoffman. If there's any questions, probably reach out to any one of us and we can just help point and guide and truly do it as a public service announcement every week, just to keep it in the forefront of people.
Yeah. I think he is someone that sort of needs to be kept in the loop too. The EDC.
We should probably also just mention that the Berlin Food Pantry is still operating. They're operating a little differently. They are taking orders and leaving things outside for people to pass. So they are still in full operation.
And that brings me to one of my other questions. I know that wheat is also in, in business or trying to help people in need. And I was wondering if we, we quite, is there some way we could do a donation to wheat or even just, or even the food pantry to help people? Or is that?
So the town is prohibited from doing various donations, but I could look, you know, I could look to see what options there might be for us with regard to just doing, doing donations.
Okay.
I know that we pay, I know that.
I think there's a really good reason that the, the town can't do that, because there are so many worthy causes. It's not really appropriate for us to take tax money and do that. That's, that's something that doesn't really follow their purview.
Look to see what we, what we, what we are able to do.
All right. Those were my comments and questions. Anyone else?
Okay.
I'll let Lisa go first, you know, if she has any. All right. I'll keep, even though I've got like front and back, there are notes. So what I was thinking that we could do, you know, throughout this meeting, we've talked about supporting Fire and EMS and, and police, you know, I'm wondering if we can just, as, you know, Boston is doing it around Mass General, as New York is doing it at seven o'clock, you know, where people just kind of come out and give a brief round of applause as a recognition, you know, to those people who are doing what they do best and they're assisting people when, you know, they have no other access but to those medical professionals and Fire and EMS who helped them. So just wanted to do, you know, a small round of applause from everyone here on the meeting and on future meetings until we can get back face to face and thank them in person. So I'll start.
Thank you. Thank you for everything everyone is doing during this. This is amazing.
Yeah. I'd also like to propose, I mean, I've seen it on Berlin Facebook Connect, that, you know, maybe we organize a, call it whatever you want, a Berlin SO Night, not SO, but SEW. Not S O, but S E W. There are so many people, and I was approached over the weekend to ask, where can I find a mask, you know, for my elderly patients? So, you know, I, I don't know how we do it, simply to ask. You know, I was thinking of reaching out to, you know, Fran Gill at the Food Pantry because you don't know if the elderly needs it, if we could work with, you know, Evy, Bob Blair, you know, Pat Wheeler, Peggy Sardell, anybody else on Council on Aging to see if there is a need, you know, for masks and kind of like how, you know, Mrs., Mrs. Hanks did the.
Karen.
Mask, yes, did the mask over the weekend. If we could try to organize something in town to see again if people could help. It's neighbors helping, you know, helping neighbors. And, you know, we'll figure out the distribution, you know, how to get them out. But, you know, didn't know if anybody wanted to help or if I'll just like take it and run with it and just kind of report back as to where we are.
I just do think you want to be careful with that because I do know that hospitals are still requesting those types of things. And part of the reason that they waited so long to say that people should wear masks is because the hospitals need them more than the individuals. So that's just something to keep in mind.
This would just be handmade, not handmade or.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, I know. The handmade ones are going to the hospitals at this point because they have been having such a hard time getting personal protection equipment. So it's just something to be careful of and be aware of if you're, if you're going to go down this path. Is a lot of the people that are sewing right now are sewing for, for hospitals or for nursing homes or for specific folks who are calling for them rather than just, you know.
No, understood. You know, and obviously it's, you know, it's a reach out. It's us, you know, S. Leckman, reaching out to see how we can help, to see how the town can help. The town is very giving and very helpful to its neighbors. So now more than ever, you know, we need to, you know, ask if there is help available. So, you know, I'm willing to start it and see what we can do, you know, and reach out to different organizations, you know, in town, Council on Aging, you know, Martin Carter. People have connections all over the place. So I, I just think it would be a nice thing for us to do, you know, to help our neighbors for masks. Hey, I went into CVS a couple hours ago to pick up my meds, and I had a mask on, but I can guarantee you that 50% of the store did not. So it would just be nice to be able to do that for our town, for those people who might need them and might not know where to go and where to look. And then my last one, I mean, as you know, I steal stuff from other towns.
We don't steal.
Repurpose, repurpose, that's like the big word at work, repurpose. So, and again, I'm willing to lead the charge. There's a Marlboro teacher who has organized like a note writing campaign where it's either to the seniors, you know, seniors in town, or it's to folks in nursing homes. Because, you know, let's be real, people in nursing homes aren't going to get any visitors. So didn't know, I plan on reaching out to parents to see if they could do it. Maybe, you know, for the kids that are doing school, you know, through BMS, if that's something that they can do, obviously with the expectation of not getting anything back. But I know at my old job, when it was Volunteer Day, I sat down and for hours wrote letters to servicemen and women overseas that I will probably never meet and that I will never know. But, you know, just a small gesture of, hi, how are you? I think could go places and where this woman here already has a process. I see no reason why I can't call her. And she actually said if it's something that you want to do in your community to reach out, and she'll pick up the stuff and she'll help deliver. So again, you know, we're all about community service. We should be about community service. That's why we're here. So this is something that I want to go forthwork. And again, you want to help, reach out, we can figure it out together. If not, I'll tackle this one as well.
Okay.
That's all I got, front and back.
Margaret.
I just wanted to mention, so the Conservation Commission is still hoping to move forward with the Earth Day cleanup this weekend, where they can assure that social distancing protocols are met. Now, we do know that it's a good thing for people to actually get outside, you know, in wide open spaces, not next to each other. But I guess my question is, does the board have any concern with this? Or should we just say, make sure that everyone practices social distancing protocols?
Really, this is just, I'm, I'm assuming going and picking up your trash bag is the closest you're going to get to anybody. And it's a solitary activity for the most part. It's, it's not like there's crowds picking up.
Taking walks right now, there's a lot of people biking. They're all trying to get outside. As long as they're not congregating, for instance, down at the South Common and playing basketball or something like that, I think that it's probably a good thing. I know everybody's trying to be careful with the social distancing.
They are, and they, they wanted to be sure that, that they could proceed, understanding that they have to keep their distance from each other.
So they're just going to put bags out, out that, the real estate agency, like they normally do, is that the?
I think that's the, the normal, whatever they normally do.
Yeah.
So Margaret, I had a question. I know that Boston, and I don't want to, I don't want to say and be like the party pooper in the crowd, but I know that Boston has gone around to all their parks and basically put a zip tie on the basketball hoops to prevent kids from congregating down there. I drove by South Street tonight, noticed that the tennis nets were down. So didn't know if there are any plans to tie up. And actually, what they're doing, what I saw last night on the news, they used to have a zip tie, but you can still kind of play basketball. So they actually put a board on top of the net and, you know, rigged it down over the rim. So there was absolutely no way that you could get a basketball in that. So I didn't know if there's any plans for that in town because kids still congregate down there on any given day.
And I know. So I can put, I think that we, I think that we're, we're small enough and close enough a community that we could actually have our police proactively go out and do community policing with that. The town was pretty clear, the town has been pretty clear all along, that there is no gathering on, you know, in the town fields, in, inside or outside the town buildings. So we just have to keep that message going. But I'm happy to enlist the police. I'll ask them to just, you know, when they're patrolling, if they see any congregating, to talk to people. I think that we, I think that we have an opportunity here to reason with people instead of, you know, well, we want to give everyone the benefit of the doubt rather than just, you know. So.
All right, thanks.
I don't believe we have need for an executive session, so I would take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.